Okay.
Back in session, start the 300s. Where do we begin?
301.
I guess maybe you can see if anybody has questions or comments on it, changes on any of them.
You want to take like the first five, anybody questions on the first five?
Okay, hold on a second.
Creating a position.
Why don't we go to the first three?
Alright.
These are on the same page here.
Yeah. Doesn't look like there was any new language added or anything. No, I didn't bring it with me.
Who's gonna share? We're all sharing.
This is teamwork.
I went to school that day in kindergarten.
Does Richie need to stay?
Who's the honor? No, does Rich need to stay for policy?
As long as somebody keeps notes.
Oh.
I guess she did.
Sorry.
Psych.
Rich, do you like a McDonald's run for us or something?
Seriously.
Let's set a timeline on this.
Please.
It's only 10 minutes.
A little lazy.
Set a timeline.
15 minutes.
We got a lot of policy to go through.
That's what I told my husband.
That's 25 minutes.
I'm with Matt, 10:15.
10:15, alright. 301, any questions?
No.
Okay. 302 was employment of the superintendent, I think the change is there, were about the updates to the background checks and turning in pre-employment certification as far as any background issues, what they call past the trash stuff. Any questions on 302? Pre-employment requirements on the second page in the dark, bold highlight. You have to do employment history review, which is basically, there's a form that gets sent in.
Why was 303 not anything? That was added into 304, so 3, 404?
303, 304, 404, and 504.
Yes. Or 304, employment of staff. Okay, this is where we start getting into the nepotism issue. 304 has one statement on page three of five at the top in bold, it says, "No teacher shall be employed who is related to any member of the board as defined in law unless such teacher receives the affirmative vote of majority of the members of the board other than the member related to the applicant, who shall not vote." So that's kind of the first mention of the nepotism. If you read the item, that they felt that the nepotism policy was discriminatory, and so they changed it. 30-
Joe, you say they thought.
PSBA, Pennsylvania School Boards Association.
Our policy was discriminatory.
They looked at ours?
Yeah. If you look at the notes-
Where are these notes?
They're at the beginning.
Okay.
Like if you look at the first couple pages, it tells you what they changed. So if you look at 304.1, employment of- I'm sorry, 304. 304 point, 304 we're looking at now, employment of staff. It just does have one little mention in there that kind of goes against our old nepotism policy, that you can hire a relative but that person has to not vote. But when you get to the full nepotism policy, it's completely changed, okay? But before we do that, but that's the first mention of it, that, it's at the very top of page three of five, this statement. So if you revert back to the old nepotism policy, which we'll get to, this statement has to come out.
Okay.
You know what I'm saying? Because if you look at this-
Right.
Before we get there though, I have another issue with this policy. Under Title I requirements on the next page, the bold, it says, "All paraprofessionals providing instructional support to programs supported by Title I funds shall have secondary school diploma and one of the following," it says, "at least a two-year study of instructional higher learning, associate's degree or higher." All of our paraprofessionals throughout, as long as I've been here, have been four-year teachers.
Okay.
So we probably would eliminate, make that, I would make that four-year degree teacher. That's the only aides we hire, Title I, any kind of special ed aide, we hire full-time teachers. Does anybody have a problem with that?
So you're going against what SBA-
PSBA.
PSBA suggests.
Right.
And you're not worried about any discrimination from that end?
We're making it more-
You're making it more-
Right, we're covering ourselves, we're covering both cheeks.
I think we should hire aides that are full-time teachers. We've always done it.
We've always done it, yeah.
I don't think that's-
Is it getting harder to find them because of pay?
No, I think they like to get their foot in the door, you know, they get benefits, they get, I mean it's, if we're gonna get, like our full-time aides get benefits, I don't think we want to hire a two-year person to get full benefits and-
Well-
So, they should be a full, okay, so-
I agree.
We'll change that, that was one issue I had with that one. And the next one is employment of part-time coaches, all that has in there as far as changes is the updated background checks that state requires and so on.
Why is this just part-time coaches and not-
We've, that was our policy. So if you look at it, you know, that was a district policy, so-
But that covers us double too, correct?
Right.
Is that what you're doing, is full-time, is that what you're saying?
No, this is only part-time.
Yeah, what they're saying is, oh, this was a district policy, this wasn't a PSBA policy, so what they did was just update what we normally had and then just put in there about the candidates, you know, about their background checks, check submitting to proper forms and so on. This was our policy, this wasn't a PSBA.
Does this get rid of FBI and all that kind of stuff?
No. It's just enforcing it, it's just pre-employment. Well, a lot of these changes were that the past the trash, that wasn't in any policy. Now, if I were to, you know, if we were to get some, hire somebody from another district, we have to send, that employee has to go to that previous district or any previous district that they've worked with, with kids, and they've got to get this affidavit filed that they're not under any investigation for child abuse, it's called a past the trash. A lot of, back then, they would say, "Listen, you're in trouble, we'll just fire you, you just resigned, we're not gonna fire you." Well then here they had a pending investigation, so the state has made that illegal now.
It just protects us.
Protects us, right. But this part-time coaches one was one of our policies that we had in there for some reason and they just updated it to include that, that's all that is. So it's really no change, it's just that, the next one, 304.2-
Can't this just be part of the regular coaches instead of a part-time? I'm just wondering why we have to have a policy for employment of a part-time coach?
I don't know why it was put in there.
Can it just be coaches, period?
I have no idea.
I mean, I don't, I just don't get that we have to have a separate policy.
You just wanted to say employment of coaches?
Can we, is there another-
Pre-employment, yeah, this is pre-employment for any coach.
How much, we just get rid of part-time?
Right, that's what I don't understand.
What is a part-time coach?
That's what I don't get, it's like-
It must have been some years ago that, I don't know.
I agree with Renee, we need to get rid of the part-time.
Okay, 304.2, that's the nepotism policy. This is the one they pretty much gutted, you know, 34, we had, there could be no relation, basically, all those ones at the top, they're paired along-
Has anybody actually read the nepotism policy? Because that was one of the things I didn't realize until last night, going through this book, I have a policy manual, I was looking at my book, I didn't have my book in my bedroom and I looked online, there is no 3, 4, or 500, so any of you who were looking at it had nothing to compare to. All you saw were the new ones, you didn't have any of the old ones. But anybody like to read what our nepotism policy is? Because you should know what it said.
Joe, what's your recommendation on this?
Historically, I was involved in that whole process originally. Being assistant principal and principal and going through interviewing and taking applications, not saying that that would happen with this board, but there was a lot of times there was pressure put on administration to hire certain employees. And former board members, I think Kathy Panser was one of the stalwarts behind this nepotism policy because of a couple of previous board members, and I think it saved, I think it saved a lot of grief from the administration having to put up with that kind of pressure.
Who was the point with Calvin?
I think you're talking about- Yeah, we had one staff member, last thing I heard was 36 of his relatives, he got hired during his tenure on the board.
Oh, you're kidding?
No.
Everybody, you know, when you run, people would ask, do you have what you consider legitimate reasons?
That's me.
This is 12 years ago, that was all I heard. The only way to get hired at Edward City School District is to be related to a board member who are gonna drink at the SOI. And it's been my experience that Joe can pack up, that when we come in here and we talk about problems with employees, and you sit there, "How'd they even get hired here?" That's how they got hired here.
Wow.
And this particular one, way they have it learned, just about every school district in Pennsylvania has that, which is basically no nepotism policy at all, you can hire any relative.
Right. Could you just abstain?
Yeah, I mean, so, we hired my wife this month, and I abstained, and next month we hire your husband, you abstained. That's how they do it.
Yeah.
But that's pretty much, but as Joe said-
I don't want him as a employee.
You know, I, when I first got on board, I sat there at meetings where people would come in and the administration would bring in three candidates-
They hired a fifth.
And they wouldn't hire any, and they would, what are we gonna, we'd just interview everyone, and they'd give them a name. So this is who we want to interview. And we come back the next night and I'm thinking, "Why were we even here this night? Go through this whole charade, you already knew who you wanted to hire." And it was bad.
Yeah, that's the way it was when I came on the board, and I just couldn't stand it. I mean, it, the whole hiring process was a complete and utter joke. We'd see some really classy, good people, and when the vote went out, it was, "Oh, I believe it."
Oh.
And it took me a while to catch on, that's how stupid I was.
Sure, well, you have to-
Because I'm thinking, okay, they're not, I'm not seeing something that you're seeing, okay, so you must know, and then I found that afterwards, well, that, that's his sister-in-law, that's his brother-in-law, that's his cousin, that's his wife's best friend, I went, so we passed up some great teachers and some great staff members and aides because so-and-so wanted his future daughter-in-law to have a job.
Look who that is, Joe.
I didn't mean to say that, I was trying to be a little more-
If you look at the reason, it says revised language significantly to indicate that employment decisions should be considered on individual merit with that, with abstention from the relative rather than a straight-out prohibition of hiring in order to ensure non-discrimination practices. So that's why, you know, that's why they put, you know, their lawyers say that's the way it should be written, you should be professional enough that, you know-
In the old city.
You know, so, I don't mind your policy, I think it saves us a lot of-
I like the old-
John, what's your legal take on that?
I don't think there's anything discriminatory with the nepotism or anti-nepotism policy, I guess.
It's all your relative, not-
I mean, I'm not sure what they, what discrimination they're concerned about, it's not, you're not making it based on race, gender, religion, anything in a protected class, so, I don't see a problem.
For me, what's nice about it now, just this week, someone called and said, "Hey, I know someone wants, you know, trying to get a job," and I say, "This is the process, the administration filters them down and they'll send top candidates to the board. If they get through that-"
So you go a little further, I just go, go to PA dot-
I said, "If they get through that and get to the board, okay," I said, "But there's nothing I can do, all right? They themselves have to go through the process, through people," and I said, "The people that are interviewing them, they can't hire their relatives either." So, we do have a process, you know, and the newer members, I know Matt and Renee have seen, when we sit there, we're gonna hire one person and they send us three, and we all looking at each other and say, "Don't we have three jobs?" Because we get really top people.
And you're all gonna get calls when we have an opening, telling you that you need to hire this person to do whatever you, we've all been promised special gifts.
Oh, wow.
You know, you get so-and-so hired- You get so-and-so hired and I will help you.
That's nice, because you're saying, look, this is, they gotta get through, if they get through to the board, nothing I can do.
Right, you're right.
Oh, we are on camera.
Did I edit this part out?
Well, of course, you never accept it.
No, you're not allowed with some days.
No, that's why I just tell everybody to go to PA dot words and apply, no law.
Did I say, right, PA dot?
You apply.
That's why-
PA educator, okay.
Are we in agreement to revert back to the old-
To keep ours in place?
Yes.
I am.
Everybody's in favor then?
Yes.
Opposed? Okay, so then that one on the first or the second, was it the first or third one has to take?
Employment of substitutes, which we really, we only have so many now, but that just updated the, again, the background checks and the employment history review statement that's pre-employment requirements. We go through Kelly for subs, pretty much, on all of them, but so, just certain ones. Employment of summer school staff-
Can I ask one question?
Yes.
How do we handle the building subs and that?
They're through Kelly. Yeah. 306, employment of summer school staff, again, it's pre-employment requirements, usually there are teachers, so we don't hire anybody from the outside to be summer school, so, you know, it's just in there. Student teachers, interns, I believe the update again is arrest or conviction reporting requirements, same, just to get the state, the new state law about making sure they're cleared. Employment contract, board resolution, I think they just added the, this is 308, classified because they combined all the professional, classified and administrative.
And it removed everything part-time.
Number three. Yeah.
Get rid of that and go to the, go to the next part.
308.
You mean the other part?
Yeah.
309, right there.
Thank you, good thing you're here.
309, interesting, I think this is state law, and maybe John can, if you look at the third paragraph down on 309, if we were to transfer somebody within the district, they would have to turn in new child abuse and clearance forms, so-
Was it the district?
Yeah, I mean, it says right there, "Each applicant for transfer or reassignment shall be required to submit an official child abuse clearance statement unless the applicant is applying for a transfer, oh wait, from one position as a district employee to another position as a district employee, and if applicant's official child abuse clearance," I guess not, if they're current, if they're current, I'm sorry.
The difference is without direction, or contact with students, and they're going to have it, and then they have to get a new job clearance.
Everything else looks pretty much the same. 310, sounds like there's some type of legal issues with that, there, it's on bold, PSBA's legal staff, it's compliance concerns, this policy will be sent out at a date, later date, so we'll have to wait on abolishing a position?
I don't know what, do you think that could be?
I don't know what they're, they're allowed to abolish a position.
Suspensions and furloughs, board responsible for that, just some wording here, non-certificated, certificated, classified employees, classified employees shall be suspended or reinstated in accordance with the procedures established in the collective bargaining agreement, so that's all in the CBA. So just combine the three classifications into one policy. Performance assessment of superintendent, I think we have that covered. It can include those items. Mutually agree upon performance standards, that's 312, doesn't look like there's any changes to that. Removed, oh, they removed the assistant superintendent. Evaluation employees, they updated this, this is all new to reflect the new teacher evaluation. The 82-1 form, distinguished proficient, needs improvement, talks about needs improvement, you know, they get the second needs improvements, considered failing and all that, so they just updated that entire document to exactly what we're doing with our employees.
Well, is this for professional, both, both are all-
This is professional, sorry, yeah, this is administrative and professional, classified, we don't use that, they don't do that with them, that's not, that's not required. We only use this for professional employees. Steve evaluates non-professional-
It has one here, administrative, professional, and classified, it has all three of them, because they did, I mean, that was 304.
Well, let's see, it says, "If your guidelines, evaluation plan, professional employees, and temporary professional employees shall utilize this piece on the right-hand page."
Well, can we pass that when it, doesn't it contradict itself? Is there another one for the non-professional staff?
Non-professional, they get evaluated using just a different form, obviously doesn't have anything to do with teaching, and Marty, it's all job performance.
But should there be a piece in here? Or change the title of the-
Evaluation of Professional?
Yeah. And then you have to take out-
Have to take out the classifieds.
Lots of words, you're gonna be fine with that.
Alright.
Do you find anyone on evaluating non-professional?
So then you have to leave it in?
I just have another pause. Or add a piece on how you're gonna evaluate the non-professional?
Yeah, I have a last one, did I add that? Alright. Physical examination, that's pre-employment, medical exam. I think what they added was, if it's, they don't have to do it, "If it's contrary to his or her religious beliefs, shall be examined only when the secretary of health determines that the employee presents a substantial menace to health of others." Very top, "An employee who presents a signed statement that a medical exam is contrary to his or her religious beliefs shall be examined only when the secretary of health determines that the employee presents a substantial menace to the health of others."
Do we have to include that?
Looks like they have a little number after it, that 56, which means it's part of statute, right?
So they said, "I have a religious sense," and he said, "I don't allow you, I have a religious-"
Right.
I can't, you can't, you know, you can't say, "I'm a nurse," or someone thinks it's contagious, or you're causing havoc hazard, then waive that.
HIV infection, goes back, policy we've had for a long time, I think they've kind of adjusted and removed some of the language and replaced staff development language with PSBA's model policy language, so, I don't think we do much with HIV, smarts.
I'm just surprised we needed a policy for it. Cover your butt.
316, non-tenured, is deleted. Policy is optional, has been deemed by PSBA is not added value to the policy manual. I don't know what that's supposed to mean, but-
It was, didn't, the non-tenure was- I mean, it wasn't very big.
Right.
I have all the policies if anybody wants to see them.
Conducting disciplinary procedures, I think they've updated some stuff with new language as far as non-professional relationships with students, breach of confidential information, conduct as required and is prohibited during work hours, so they just kind of cleaned up the language, they included the 72-hour notification, that if they get in trouble, they've got to notify the superintendent within 72 hours on a form.
I did have a question on the very top, I guess this is the page two, page two at the top, when it says, "The board directs that all district employees shall be informed of conduct that is required and is prohibited during work hours and the disciplinary actions that may be applied for the violation of the board policies, administrative regulation, rules, and procedures." So, the administrative regulation in board policies, so is there need, there need to be a-
We have an employee handbook that they all sign.
Okay.
That every employee signs, it has-
Does it have the, the, what the, what do you want to call it?
Job description?
Well, no, this wouldn't be job description, this would be if the conduct, if there was disciplinary action being taken, what, you know, if they did this, this is what happens, like we do in the handbooks, they all make your handbooks, if you fight, you, hey, you get a day suspension, or if you do this, you get that.
I think it's general, I think it's more general probably. I don't know, I haven't seen it, but it-
So there is, there is a-
We don't get that specific, like if you miss the first five minutes of work, you get this, we don't, there's nothing that specific, or, you know.
Okay, so, what, so you're saying there is a book that they, the employees get?
Employee handbook, right.
Okay, and that's different than the administration, than what the administration has? Is it the same for all employees?
I'm not 100% sure what you're asking.
I don't think the administrators don't sign for employee handbook, I don't think they do that.
Does the professional staff and the custodial staff?
Yep.
Okay, but there aren't anything specifically, you know, if this happens, this is what happens, it's all on case-to-case basis?
No, that's all case-to-case basis, talk about it, you know, looking past what we've done in the past, you know, we obviously do progressive discipline first, you know.
Well, my concern, and this is where the first one came up into play, and it was with that last one that we were talking about, is I think there needs to be some specific things set up that, you know, with this policy that scares the bejeebers out of me with the teachers in regards to the student, their interactions. So, if they are friends with somebody on Facebook and they're not allowed to be, or they're tweeting, or they're texting somebody inappropriately, I mean, I'm not sure how we should handle that, these are the questions that I have, if there's not specific disciplinary actions for certain things, then I think it's gonna be mayhem, and I'm afraid of the whole policy.
I think you're just saying, this is, this is the prohibited conduct, and if you engage in it, it can lead to discipline, including an up to termination, which means I could be terminated for doing it the first time. Can't be more severe than that, so, that's, I don't think-
Shouldn't there be some kind of a step so that, I hate to say that they know it or progression, but, I mean, we're about to, I mean, that, like I said, that policy really just kind of overwhelms me because, I don't know how many of you read it in detail, but, I mean, if you give them a ride, if you talk to them, if you this, if you that, I mean, I can just see things getting very blurred, if you call them a nickname, that's inappropriate, I mean, I mean, it could get really ugly. So, I'm just putting it out there that choosing our words and making sure that we have things in place so that we aren't getting, I don't know.
I don't think you want to delineate the specific penalties.
All that does is delay.
It forces us into-
Yes, it forces us to follow those steps, which is what we're getting into in vote tech. If we had something like this, that particular teacher, we'd have gone. But because they have that, you know, so-
But it has to be fair and across the board.
But the point is, the policy we have now, because of the things that are happening today, all over the place, you can terminate one incident because of its severity.
Well, sure.
Yeah.
But there has to also be, I would think-
But the very thing you're asking for in Lawrence County vote tech, we have a situation that a person should know possibly way, I mean, if I had, if it was my son or daughter going there, I'd be there every day, wouldn't know why they're still there, but because the legal process, that's where we're at, they're still there.
Well, I'm not asking for anything, one way or the other, I'm very unsure of what path we should take, and I just, I think it's a very slippery slope no matter which way we go, and that's where my concerns are, the vital discussion.
Are you talking about disciplining people?
Yeah, just in general, because-
I think we, as administration, we're pretty good at progressive discipline, I mean, if we, we've suspended people right off the bat, you know, when they needed to be because it was so severe, and we've put letters in files when it was progressive to the next, and that's what we, we talk about that all the time, as, hey, I'm, you know, I got this issue with this employee, you know, what's your recommendation? Well, how many times have they done it? If it's multiple, then it's, then we're looking at, and we look back at their past history, we look in their personnel file, okay, they were in trouble for this, trouble that, third time they've done it, we've got to, okay, we've done this the first time, this the second time, well now we've got to step into the third, you know, suspension without pay for three days, you know, whatever it might be, so, then they always fight it, they grieve it, and then we sit down with their union rep and then we go through it, so, I think we've always been pretty good as far as looking at the severity of the incident, is it progressive, is it the first time, and dealing out discipline based on that, whether it's a letter in their file, whether it's a verbal warning with a follow-up email, you know, whether it's suspension, whether it's, I don't think we've had too many issues as far as, as if we spell it out, though.
Inconsistency from employee to employee, too. Consistency from employee to employee, so, you know, the similar type of offenses have been handled similarly from employee to employee.
I think what you might be trying to say is that there should be like different, like, tiers of infractions, saying like, you do these infractions and you're going to be subject to this, this, but if you do these kinds of, the next level of infractions, you're subject to this, is that kind of what you're saying?
Well, I'm, I'm thinking that something like that needs to be in place because of all the social media that's out there, I don't know how you're going to control it. Like, I find that these policies that, you know, we're about to try to put in place are crazy. How do you know what 133 people are doing with each kid in the district? How do you know if somebody, if you, you happen to be walking down the hall and you hear somebody say, okay, bye, Mr. Kissy Kissy Face, instead of his name? I mean, you know, how do you, how do you discern what is, I, I have to deal with this? Or, oh, well, it was just a slip? I mean, they're saying nothing is, you're not allowed, there's zero tolerance, and that's where I get concerned, is it's going to be like this ongoing process, and I just think it's, it frightens me to have it just be out there, because, I don't know, the whole.
I mean, you could say the prohibited conduct is you can't have any interaction with students on social media, I wouldn't say what the penalty is, but other than opt-in, including termination, but you could spell out the specific prohibited conduct if you want to do that.
We did have.
I'm not sure.
We did have, we had somebody come in from the IU, goes around all the schools this year, two hours, met with every teacher in the auditorium, and went through that kind of, that policy, and that was one of the questions that came up, this policy wasn't out yet, the one she's talking about is the eight, eight seventeen or whatever in the back. The question actually came up from one of the teachers, was, is there going to be a policy on this? We said, yeah, it's coming, because PSBA knew, you know, we knew it was coming, so I think they're going to be happy that it's spelled out and written out, that they can see what's, you know, and we'll continue to educate them. You know, you're friends with a teacher on Facebook, which is the issue we have at the VOTAC.
Yeah.
Is, you know, they, you should friend a kid, a student, you know, and our teachers need to know that, and that's part of the policy, you're friends, there's no educational reason to be doing that, so.
How do you do that in a community our size, when we have teachers who have children in the building?
I think it's spelled out in the policy, you'll see it, it says if there's existing family relationships, that's one thing, but if it's student, teacher, that's a whole nother, yeah. They cover that in that, that policy that's in there. More, I'm getting way ahead of, but it does say non-professional relationships.
You know what I mean? But that's, that's where, that's where it gets great to me, and that's where my concerns come in.
He's got to be professional, that's all, it's all about professionalism, and we stress it all the time, they see it on the news, is it worth losing your job? Yes, exactly, that's my.
Is it worth losing your job today?
Or your career?
Over a text.
Well, they all think that, they don't think anything of it, or they think they're going to get away with it, or you just, you know.
As long as they're looking, if they're looking forward to the policy, I don't think that's going to happen.
All right, I mean, I, I mean, that's, you just don't know about it until you find out about it, but you educate them, you show them the policy, and you in-service them, these are the things, and they had a ton of good questions for her, they, you know, they, you know, so they, they know that it's here, and they swallow plum, and that's why this, this policy was written, because of plum, you know, it's from history.
What about educating the students too, saying?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah, there should be an assembly or something.
Something like if you're going to have.
The parents also, they need to know.
And that's part of it, they, this policy has to be presented to the parents, so, that's all. It is 20 after, I don't know if we want to.
It's out here. We've got a lot done.
Are we going to go over the rest of these, or like, eventually, or like?
Yeah.
We want to get to 320, that way we'll pass 20 this, this month?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
All right.
Okay, we can do.
Educator misconduct, I believe this is kind of what we were talking about, 317.1. It's a new policy from PSBA, and it kind of spells out a lot of things that Mr. Charlie was talking about, looking at the sexual or other intimate parts of a child or other individual for the purpose of arousing or gratifying sexual desire in a individual, sexual exploitation, romantic invitations, you know, basically that grooming, but this kind of gets into the entire.
Spiel.
Also gets into if another educator knows, or another person knows about it, they're, they're deemed to report it, you know, they can't, you know, keep that, that's also a part of plum, so.
So for the most part, I think we can trust PSBA, hopefully they're right.
A lot of, when you see those numbers, those 5, 7, 8, those are all statutes, I mean, it's written based on statute, and that's.
You have no choice.
You have no choice. I mean, if you know about something that's going on, you've got to report it.
Well, we had a plan, a policy in place, conduct disciplinary procedures, 317.
This is all new, this is, they wrote it based on the.
Right, we had one in place, I mean, we actually have one, it's, it's not identical, but it has a lot of the same in.
For the most part.
Yeah, for the most part. Isn't it scary that we have to put something like this in place?
Yeah.
The whole, it gets worse.
Those are only for the law body, laws are for the law body, not for the criminals.
No, yeah.
Criminals don't care.
Yeah, they don't care if you're a boss or not.
Almost every single one of these has a statute behind it.
318, tardiness, I think we had that before. Not much to it, just being tardy, it's up to the superintendent, designate assessed penalties when employees are tardy.
They took out the, the ability to reserve, the board reserves the right to assess an employee's salary for failure to perform contracted services or for violation of board So basically, it took out the, the option of docking their pay.
I don't know if you've ever done that.
That's a contractual issue too. We'd have to negotiate that.
So that shouldn't have been in here in the first place?
Yeah, I don't know where they.
I mean, that's, that is our policy.
That was probably a old, old, old.
Wasn't it, yeah, well, adopted in 2006, like most of the ones in the book.
Yeah, that would be something we'd have to negotiate.
So that's something we can't even do anyway?
Outside activities, again, combine the three groups, added some updated language, I don't think there's anything major to it. Employees, freedom of, similar freedom of speech in non-school setting, I don't think there's much of a change there.
I think you could probably get 321 at 22, two or three pages.
321, political activities.
There wasn't anything, you just kind of added a little bit in there.
322, gifts, which somebody mentioned already.
Yes.
Tobacco, we can keep going, 323, nothing new there. 324, personnel files, I don't think there was anything major, just updated some language.
Oh, yeah, there was something on that one.
Say that, but that's it.
Yeah, I was going to say that one.
Whatever. So we'll go through 323.
We've got, we've got a lot done there.
323.
So is every district, I mean, is PSBA having every district three do it?
Well, what they recommended, because you had 300, 400, and 500s, and every time you updated a policy, they had to update 302, 402, and 502. So what they recommended was you just combine them all into one section called 300, employees.
Makes sense.
Instead of having.
You had three. You had triplets of everything.
So like, is Riverside just?
Well, here's what they're doing now, like, so if you update your policy, let's say you wanted to update policy 402. They weren't, they said, well, we only have 300s now, so they're almost forcing you to combine all your policies into the 300s. So it was a recommendation from them that, hey, we're not going to continue to send out copies of every, of the 300, 400, 500 policy that you just changed, so, plus it's all online now, are all our policies.
But I mean, are all the districts going to be going to this?
I would imagine.
It just kind of makes it.
Probably will.
You're kind of calling for them not to take advantage of it.
But they, they also can adjust, just like we will, add, and so they keep, like, we'll keep our nepotism policy, which makes us unique, they'll, and they're, they're adjusting them.
Yeah, I have one thing, I know we all agreed to this with the packets coming online, but it'd still be possible to get, you don't even have to mail it, I can come over and pick one up, this is the last one, reading everything online, that's just killing me.
It was 95 pages.
Yeah, it was.
That's a lot of paper.
Is what's sent on the communicator, what's in our folders?
The communicator is what our folder is, and I don't know why they, she, they made copies.
Well, they gave us a PDF so that we could email it, they sent, they sent that PDF version of the IU budget, all the districts, because they said, if you want to email it to your board, but they also gave us these copies, so.
Right, but in our, in our folder tonight, they worked copies again.
You love this?
Again.
Well, she just runs it, she's, you know.
It's like, that didn't need to happen again.
Does all want a laptop?
I don't, I don't like, I don't like, I like paper.
We don't have any money.
Oh, we have a laptop at school, we just use the ones in the school.
Oh, yeah, there you go.
Yeah, we can do that here, but I'm just saying the packets.
I don't have a problem with, I mean, if it's prepared on time.
Yeah, I mean, that's, is that, that really a problem?
We're making copies for Monday anyway, so, yeah, I mean, if you want to stop by and pick one up.
I can, yeah, I've said, you don't have to mail it, I can stop, it's just, I mean, I, I really did try, but that's just.
It's just too much.
It was a lot to collect.
Sure. See, I like it, I just sit, watch my reality TV and just read.
That's not a good thing to say. Are we adjourned? No, I guess we're not adjourned yet. Thursday, we still haven't gotten to the video recording policy, which I would like to get done, so that this can, can move forward, but I'm not sure where it is in this slew of policies. I think that, or the end of March.
It's in the meetings.
Yeah, but I, is that in the back?
No.
Rings don't stay. They're not in there? No?
No, it's a separate, that's a long one, that's going to take.
Too much time. Another month. Okay. I'll save it for the next one, then. I am not sure what the holdup is on.
Hey, could we put it?
For Thursday?
On the agenda for Thursday and discuss it, and then vote on it after we discuss it, if you want to get to it for Thursday.
We might have changes.
They can't be addressed Thursday? No. Well, there are, I'm hoping there will be changes, because I, there are some things I don't like about that policy, the way it's written specifically. Okay.
Change amended, if we want to do that.
And that also has the participation for phone, so that is going to be another conversation, so I agree with you.
So you want it on the minutes for, you want it on?
We can talk about it in the business.
We can discuss it, they can get their comments, and we can make whatever revisions, and then adopt.
I guess it'd have to go through what a first reading.
Doesn't have to sit for 30 days?
Yeah, yeah, first reading will be on Thursday.
So if we have changes made on Thursday, would it be able to sit that month so that next month it can be adopted? If those changes are agreed upon at the meeting?
Thursday?
I don't know which one it is. Another one of these. Oh, yeah, okay, anybody have any new business, any questions, concerns, needing adjourned?